We're going to call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lars.
Aye, here.
Mackey, Niles, here. Schrader.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Brand.
Here.
Item number two, we have public participation. Anybody wishing to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Cindy?
Cindy Keller, the Director of the Parks Recreation and Forestry. I have two things for you. One is on your calendar. I hope you have that this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. we are doing the ribbon cutting of the conservancy. We're pretty excited about it. It's quite the new venture for the city. So we hope you guys can make it to that. And the second is first time we've ever done it, but we're doing a Jefferson County independent celebration on July 3rd at the Fair Park. When I say first time, it's because we're collaborating with not only the Fair Park, but also festival foods. And this year, last year, we did it, and it was strictly fireworks. This year, we've expanded it. We're going to have a tractor pull. We're going to have a bags tournament. We're going to have inflatables for the kids. There will be beverages, some food trucks. So we're kind of excited about it. We're hoping that maybe it'll expand a little bit more. Right now, it's going to be from like four to after the fireworks. And hopefully, we can make it a little bit longer after that. But this is the first draft of this, and you guys get to see it. So mark your calendars for July 3rd at the Fair Park.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Toby. If you don't know, last Friday was an important day for the city. We swore in our 10th Chief of Police, which is amazingly, given the age of this community, there doesn't seem like many Chiefs of Police. But of course, we swore in Al Richter. I did leave at your seat Al's resume. And one of the things I think you noticed is that Al is one of those guys who just came up from the ranks. He was initially hired in 2006 as a patrol officer, promoted to Lieutenant in 2016, and to Captain of Police in 2020. And that's a position where he served as Second in Command of the Department. And most recently, the Police and Fire Commission had authorized Al to be the interim Chief of Police upon Chief Polizzi's departure. He's also extremely well-credentialed. Al's been through Northwestern University's School of Public Safety and also the University of Wisconsin's Command College. So I think his combination of experience and education made him an excellent candidate. And he, of course, was the selection of the Police and Fire Commissioners who made the department go forward crucially. And I think we're lucky to have him. I've had a chance to work with Al, and I'll put a little bit of time. And I'm going to introduce Al. Most of you know him, but Al, please feel free to say a few words.
Thank you, members of the council. Like Tim had referenced, I think this is a win for the city. You know, anytime you get a guy that can spend 17 years here and work his way up to serve in the top law enforcement official's position, that's a good thing for everyone. I forgot to tell you, Toby, last Friday, I think late 2004, early 2005, when I was trying to get employed here, I think your dad was on the Police and Fire.
Probably.
He gave me the approval. So yeah, I've been working hard. And you know, I was asked by Lori or one of the other PFC members if it was always my goal to be the Chief of Police. And honestly, no. I mean, I just always believed in furthering my education and being the best that I could be at my trade. So that's what I can promise you, is hard work and to keep Jefferson a safe community as it is and continue to strive for professionalism. Thank you, thank you very much.
Just one last comment. I think I really would like to acknowledge the Police and Fire Commission, along with Dave Knudsen. And I think they really ran a really good process. It was pretty timely and a lot of thought and a lot of hard work went into it. And I want to congratulate them too, because I think they really did do a good job.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number three, Mayor Proclamation. A proclamation honoring Brian Frolmater for his retirement from the City of Jefferson. On behalf of the mayor, the city administrator, fellow council persons, and fellow employees of the City, City of Jefferson Proclamation. Whereas, since joining the department on June 29th, 1998, Brian Frolmater served the City of Jefferson for more than 23 years in the Public Works Department, working as a Public Works crew person until his retirement on April 1st, 2022. And whereas, Brian Frolmater has been instrumental in the successful maintenance of the city's infrastructure and construction of new projects for the City Public Works Department, and has exhibited great pride in maintaining our streets, most specifically through street painting, street sweeping, and snowplowing, where all services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the citizens and businesses of Jefferson. And whereas, during his time of service to the city, Brian Frolmater served the citizens and businesses of this community tirelessly and without complaint, being on call 24 hours per day, seven days per week, 365 days per year. And whereas, Brian Frolmater has been completely dedicated and showed exemplary care in the work he has done, truly caring about the city's needs and its citizens and businesses. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the City of Jefferson, and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Jefferson, that with great gratitude and appreciation, thank Brian Frolmater for his 23 years of dedicated service to the City of Jefferson. And extend best wishes to him and his family for a healthy and happy retirement on this day, June 7th, 2022. Brian, if you want to watch me, I'll see if I may have a plaque for you. Oh. Do we do have cake and everything over here? I have cupcakes, and a sheet of corn. Okay, next on the agenda, item number four, Ordinance Number 2-22, An Ordinance Amending 14-6A of the Jefferson Municipal Code to Add Additional Member to the Park and Recreation Commission, to be introduced for a secretary by Alderman Niles.
Council President, Citizens of Jefferson, Council Members. City of Jefferson, Ordinance Number 2-22, An Ordinance Amending State Statutes 14-6A of the Jefferson Municipal Code to Add Additional Member to the Park and Recreation Commission. Whereas, the City of Jefferson has previously established a Park and Recreation Commission to serve the best interests of the citizens of Jefferson. And whereas, said Parks and Recreation Commission is presently comprised of seven members, which include a member of the city's school board or a city school administrator or a representative of the city's school district. And whereas, the common council has determined that it would be appropriate to expand the membership of the Park and Recreation Commission to eight, with the newest member being a representative from the Jefferson County Government. Now therefore, the common council does hereby ordain as follows. Section 1, Section 14-6A of the Jefferson Municipal Code is amended, increasing membership in the City of Jefferson Park and Recreation Commission from seven to eight members, with the newest member to be a representative from the Jefferson County Government. Said representative shall act in an ex officio capacity on any commissioned matter. This, Section 2, This ordinance shall be effective on the date after its enactment and publication of this ordinance as required by law. I so move.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Any questions?
Ex officio means you won't be, he or she won't be able to vote on any motions or other resolutions.
Hearing no further discussion, please indicate yea or nay as Sarah calls her name.
Alderman Niles.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Item number five, Ordinance Number 3-22, An Ordinance to Modify Section 204 of the Jefferson Municipal Code to Regulate City Parks. And I'll be introducing this one. City of Jefferson Propose Ordinance Number 3-22, An Ordinance to Modify Section 204 of the Jefferson Municipal Code to Regulate City Parks. An Ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 204 of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson to Regulate City Parks. Due to its length, in lieu of reading the complete text of this ordinance, a complete copy is on file at the Office of the City Clerk and is available for public inspection. I would so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds were taken. Any further discussion? Cindy, could you shed some light on just to hit the hotspots without going through the whole ordinance?
Okay, so basically, the hotspots on this is that we are now going to allow dogs in all our city parks. They will need to be on a leash and in control. The owner needs to be in control at all times. So as you know, we had in the past offered dogs to be at Louban, Rivers Edge Nature Preserve. We also looked at the conservancy as well. Now we're doing it, all of them. It does say in the ordinance though that we don't want them to be running loose like in activity areas, like at ten-stell touring soccer games or baseball games, football games, that kind of stuff. But other than that, they can be in the parks as long as they are on a leash. We are, just was talking with the chief, that we have, we are in the process of putting a bunch of new dog waste receptacles throughout the park system. So not only do we have them in the parks right now, but we'll be adding to Rotary and Stapi and that as well. That's pretty much all it is.
Is there a fine for a violation?
I don't look at this. Yes, the first violation is $25. And then it's $50 if they don't pay it within 10 days. And that's something that, I don't know if that's a state statute.
That's base fine, so the cost associated with that, probably, it's been a while since I wrote a citation as a patrolman, but it's probably like $90 per something.
Quarter price, right?
Yeah.
And that's something that if you choose during, when we do the schedule, we could actually increase this as well.
And do they have to be licensed, the dog?
Yes.
Heart ordinance.
Yep.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please indicate yea or nay as Sarah calls her name.
Alderman Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 13, tonight's consent agenda to be introduced by Alderman Schrader.
Mr. President, I have Resolution Number 13, Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson that the consent agenda for June 7th, 2022 is hereby adopted, which includes vouchers payable for June 2022 in the amount of $260,524.89, payroll summary for May 20th, 2022 in the amount of $172,485.31, and payroll summary for June 3rd, 2022 in the amount of $188,238.79. Also, council minutes from the May 17th, 2022 meeting of the common council, the school district facility use agreement, and licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. There were a large number of them because of renewals. Operators licenses, liquor licenses, cigarette licenses, a special Class B license for the Rotary Club Rott and Burger event at Jefferson County Fairgrounds, and a special Class B license for the Rotary Club at Jefferson County Fair at the Jefferson County Fairgrounds. Mr. President, I move approval.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Byer. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, please indicate yea or nay as Sarah calls her name.
Alderman Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 14, A Resolution Appointing Authorized Representative to File Applications for Financial Assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. Alderwoman Teeter.
Council President, citizens of Jefferson, and council members, our Resolution Number 14, A Resolution Appointing Authorized Representative to File Applications for Financial Assistance from the State of Wisconsin and Environmental Improvement Fund. Whereas, it is the desire of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, a municipal corporation, to file several applications for state financial assistance for construction of a new wellhouse for well number three and improvements to existing water facilities under the Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. Whereas, it is necessary to designate a representative for filing said applications. But be it therefore resolved by the City Council of Jefferson, the City of Jefferson, that the city administrator is hereby appointed as the authorized representative for the City of Jefferson for the purpose of filing these applications, and that the representative is further authorized and empowered to do all things necessary in connection with said applications. I would so move.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion or questions? Please indicate your vote by saying yea or nay as Sarah calls her name.
Alderman Tully.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Resolution Number 15, A Resolution to Declare Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures for Safe Drinking Water Loan Program Project, to be introduced by Alderman Byer.
Mr. President, council members and citizens, Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures for Safe Water Loan and Program S D W L Q Project. Whereas, the City of Jefferson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, the municipality owes and operates water supply and distribution system, the system, as a public utility. And whereas, the municipality plans to construct a new water supply wellhouse for well number three and makes improvements to existing water facilities, the project. And whereas, the municipality expects to receive a loan from the Safe Water Loan Program to finance the project and expects to issue taxes and bonds to the program in evidence of the loan. And whereas, because the loan will not become available prior to summer of 2023, the municipality must provide interim financing to cover the costs of the project incurred prior to receipt of a loan. And whereas, it is necessary, desirable, and in the best interest of the municipality to advance monies from the funds on hand on the interim basis until the loan becomes available and the bonds can be issued. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Jefferson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, that Section 1, Expenditure of Funds the Municipality Shall Make Expenditures as Needed from Existing Municipal Accounts that Contain Ordinary Municipal Revenue to Pay for the Costs of the Project Until Bond Proceeds Become Available. Section 2, Declaration of Official Intent, The Municipality hereby officially declares its intent under 26 C F R Section 1.150-2 to Reimburse Said Expenditures with Proceeds of the Bonds, the Principal Amount of Which Is Expected Not to Exceed Section 3, Unavailable of Long-Term Funds, No Funds for Payment of the Project, Fund Sources Other Than the Bonds Are or Are Reasonably Expected to be Reserved, Allowed on a Long-Term Basis or Otherwise Set Aside or In Municipality Pursuit to Budget or Financial Policies. Section 4, Public Availability of Official Intent Resolution. This Resolution Shall be Made Available for Public Inspection at the Municipal Administrator's Office within 30 Days After Its Approval in Compliance with Available State Laws Governing the Availability of Records of Official Acts and Shall Remain Available for Public Inspection Until Bonds Are Issued. Section 5, Effective Date, This Resolution Shall Be Effective Upon Its Adoption and Approval Adopted the 7th Day of June 2022. I resume.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I think, Todd, you can correct me if I say something in error, but previously, the city council authorized Todd to take steps to engage an engineer to look at reconstruction of the existing wellhouse for well number three. That's the one in the alley, plus abandoning the underground reservoir. So that's being engineered right now, would that be fair?
Yeah.
So basically, what this does, you know, if the city does make an application to like the Safe Drinking Water Fund, you know, that round is like 2023. It's too late for 2022. But because we're spending money now, should the council authorize the project, we're saying we get to reimburse ourselves for money we're spending now out of any proceeds from that loan or any other source. So that's what you're doing tonight.
Further questions? Hearing none, please indicate yea or nay as Sarah calls her name.
Alderman Byer.
Yea.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Moving on to Resolution Number 16, Resolution Acknowledging the Review of the 2021 CMAR, to be introduced by Alderman Lars.
Thank you, Council President, council members, and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 16. Whereas, it is a requirement under the Wisconsin Fluid and Discharge Elimination System, W P U V S, permits issued by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the City of Jefferson to file a compliance, maintenance, and report, C M A R, by June 30th, and report its wastewater treatment system under the Wisconsin Administrative Code, N R 208. Whereas, it is necessary to acknowledge that the governed body has reviewed the 2021 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, the C M A R, be it therefore resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the common council hereby informs the Department of Natural Resources that said council has reviewed the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for the calendar of the year of 2021. I so move.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brandl. Anybody have any further questions? Hearing none, please indicate by saying yea or nay as Sarah calls her name.
Alderman Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Okay, item number 10, Resolution Number 17, A Resolution Approving the Contract for the Senior Center Flooring, to be introduced by Alderman Niles.
Thank you, Council President, citizens of Jefferson, council members. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 17, Approval of Contract for Senior Center Flooring. Whereas, the City of Jefferson publicly opened bids for the Senior Center Flooring Project on June 2nd, 2022. And whereas, the City of Jefferson received only one bid for flooring project. And whereas, monies for the project have been allocated in the 2021 Capital Projects Budget as well as C D E G grant funding. And now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein accepts the sole bid for the Senior Center Flooring Project and be it further resolved by the common council that herein authorizes the city administrator to sign the contract with Wise Way Incorporated to replace the carpeting and vinyl flooring at the Senior Center for not to exceed a amount of $39,346. I so move.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lars. Any further discussion? Questions?
It's hard to get bids these days.
That's exactly right. And that's what we discussed in finance, and we did approve it in finance.
Thank you.
Hearing nothing else, please indicate by saying yea or nay as Sarah calls her name.
Alderman Lars.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Mr. Brandl.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Item number 11, Resolution Number 18, A Resolution Approving the Purchase of a Bobcat L28 Articulating Loader with Broom and Bucket, to be introduced by Alderman Schrader.
Mr. President, here is Resolution Number 18. Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the City of Jefferson obtained two bids from equipment suppliers for a replacement of 2001 Jacobson mower, which is used primarily for snow removal. This piece of equipment will allow park staff to not only remove snow, but complete many projects in the parks. Whereas, the City of Jefferson allocated $40,000 from the Capital Projects Equipment Fund for the park's mower replacement, and will use $7,000 from the Stopbot Park bathroom renovation. Whereas, the lowest qualified bidder was Midstate Equipment in the amount of $46,095, including an articulating tractor with Broom and Bucket. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Jefferson authorizes the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Midstate Equipment to purchase a Bobcat L28 articulating loader with Broom and Bucket in the amount of $46,095. It's important to pronounce the word articulating correctly. Mr. President, I move approval of Resolution Number 18.
Thank you. A motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Niles. Any further discussion? Questions? Again, we discussed this in finance, and it was unanimous. Okay, moving forward, please indicate yea or nay as Sarah calls her name.
Alderman Niles.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution Number 19, A Resolution Authorizing the Downtown Street Infrastructure. And I'll introduce this resolution. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 19, Authorizing the Purchase of Streetscape Materials for Historic Business District Renovation Project. Whereas, the Historic Business District is scheduled to undergo significant renovation during the summer of 2022 by way of a project that has previously been approved by the common council.[1651.92]